Good afternoon, everyone. I'm gonna get started for today's meeting. It's Monday, June the 9th, 2025, and it is 3:34. And then, Ms. Anna, can you establish quorum, please?
Mayor Torey Gonzalez-Denosa.
Present.
Councilwoman Jessica O'Teena.
Present.
Councilwoman Marisa Gerla.
Present.
And Councilwoman Alberto Vela.
Present.
Mayor, we've established quorum. We're still waiting on Mayor Pro Temru Benflata.
Okay, and he should be on his way shortly. Okay, next item is invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please stand. Heavenly Father, as we enter the summer season, we thank you for the blessings of growth, renewal, and community. Guide our decisions tonight with wisdom and purpose. Watch over our residents, keep them safe, and may this summer be filled with peace, health, and progress for our beautiful city. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is disclosure of conflicts of interest. Ms. Anna, has anything been filed?
We have one from Mayor Pro Temflata regarding Executive Session Item Number Two related to Cimera.
Okay, thank you. Next item is presentation, and the first one is recognition of EMS paramedics by DHR Health.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are recognizing two of our own for their exceptional life-saving efforts. Today, we are joined by DHR Health as they are here to formally recognize two of our paramedics and firefighters for going above and beyond in the line of duty. The quick thinking and heroic actions from our own Mission EMS and Fire Department made a critical difference in a life or death situation. Today, we are proud to highlight our wonderful EMS and firefighters, and we are excited and proud to have their skills serving our community. At this time, I would like to invite our members from DHR Health, if they'd like to say a few words about their presentation for our Mission Fire and EMS.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. My name's Daniel Todd. I'm the Director of EMS with DHR Health. Just really wanted to show a lot of gratitude and just an insane amount of joy and just gratitude that you guys are doing what you're doing today. Your EMS Department, Fire Department has done so much to care for your community, and we see that in the patients that we receive. And this is one of those patients that we'd like to recognize and really kind of, you know, show our appreciation for everything that you guys do.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like Dr. Shine to give a couple of words.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, and thank you for the pleasure. I'm Dr. Shine. I'm one of the trauma surgeons at DHR Health. We started a unique program at our hospital just a few months ago that's actually been in the works for several years. We are the first, and very proud of it, first institution in all of South Texas, actually, south of Houston, to offer the opportunity to sick patients, specifically trauma patients, to come directly to the operating room from the field. They bypass the emergency room, they come directly into the operating room because their injuries have been deemed serious or severe enough to need immediate surgical intervention. We practiced this many times before the first patient came through, and that patient was brought in by the folks here at Mission Fire Department. They did an exceptional job. It really was the difference between life and death of this patient. That patient required, we measure things on life-saving interventions, and this patient required several life-saving interventions in that first 60 minutes. Without their skill, their ability to bring this patient to us immediately and directly in the operating room, and having the vision and the fortitude to call us and let us know they think they have the right patient, without that, I really do believe this patient would have had a different outcome. Very happy to say that patient, without revealing too much information, has survived, done very well, and has seen me in clinic much longer after what would have been expected for a patient with these type of injuries. So with that, we say thank you, and we have a couple tokens to offer them.
Okay, thank you.
If President, could we have Oscar Lopez and Pilar Garcia come forth, as well as Chief Silva? So, we do have some awards for both the medics that took part with this patient. It's a very small token of gratitude for everything that they did, just to really show our appreciation. We also have, you know, I know you guys carry a lot of stuff, right? Some little bags and some yaddies in there. And then, for the Fire Department, just for everything that they've done and the progress that they've made and dedication to the community, we thank you guys. We thank you guys for everything that you do and the hard work that you're doing to make this happen and truly deliver great care to the community. So, thank you so much.
Do any of the firefighters want to say something? Or Chief, do you want to say a few words before we get our pictures taken?
Um, don't have much to say. I just want to thank City Council and DHR for this recognition. Without this, without you guys, this wouldn't have been possible. So, just thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being there.
Thank you. I don't have much to say either, but thank you guys for giving us the opportunity, for serving the community. We really like to do it, and we appreciate y'alls assistance with our system, with the chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Without taking too much time, we couldn't have done it without you, the support of our mayor and city council, and of course, our city manager. This is a great asset that we have going in our city, and I want to thank our partners, DHR, for presenting this to our guys that they well deserve, and of course, to our department as a whole because we're one team. So, thank you.
Well, we'd like to thank DHR for coming over here to Mission and acknowledging our wonderful EMS team and our firefighters. We're so proud of everything that they do here to keep our residents safe. So, at this time, we'd like to invite Council down to take a photo with our paramedics and firefighters.
They moved it to master control.
It's unmuted, Ruben. Because they're telling me they can hear. Audio is now on, is what they're saying. If you can't see the camera, the camera can't see you, so you're good. Sydney, Sydney. But they can't see. They can't see. No, now they can't see. They can hear, but they can't see.
Once again, we'd like to thank all of our firefighters and EMTs for all they do to keep us safe here in Mission.
Okay, the next item is a proclamation honoring Judge Mauro Reyna.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Come before you today to seek a proclamation in honor and memory of Judge Mauro L. Reyna III. With me today, I have his wife, Paula Castillo Reyna, and coworkers that worked with Judge Reyna over his 30 years of service. Resolution, proclamation reads, "Whereas the City of Mission pauses to honor the life and legacy of Judge Mauro L. Reyna III, who dedicated over 30 years of exemplary service to the Mission Municipal Court and the community at large. And whereas Mauro L. Reyna III was born on February 13, 1952, in McAllen, Texas, and was a student at La Jolla and graduated with a bachelor's degree from St. Mary's University and a doctorate of jurisprudence from the University of Texas at Austin, and served his country through the National Guard. And whereas Judge Mauro Reyna was appointed to the Mission Municipal Court in 1994, faithfully serving with integrity, fairness, and an unwavering commitment to justice throughout his esteemed career. And whereas Judge Mauro Reyna earned the respect and admiration of colleagues, court staff, attorneys, and citizens alike for his profound knowledge of the law, professionalism, and compassionate approach to the bench. And whereas Judge Mauro Reyna's tireless dedication to public service has left an indelible mark on the City of Mission and setting a standard of excellence for future generations. And whereas Judge Mauro Reyna entered into his eternal home on June 10, 2024, and is survived by his wife, Paula Castillo Reyna, and children, Nick Reyna and Michelle L. Wood, and granddaughter, Eliana Grace Wood. And now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim this day as a time to honor the memory and legacy of Judge Mauro L. Reyna III, and recognize his outstanding service to the Mission Municipal Court and the citizens of Mission, proclaimed on this, the 9th day of June, 2025."
Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Second, there's a motion, and a second to approve the proclamation for Judge Mauro Reyna. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimity. Thank you.
I just want to thank you all for doing this for my husband. I know this really means a lot to us. Thank you.
Thank you. You okay? Yes, yes. Okay, the next item is a report from our Mission Economic Development Corporation. Phil Lynn.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Mr. Pettis. My update will be brief, but thanks for having us today. I'm pleased to report that, if you could go to the next slide. I'm pleased to report that last week, we hosted, in partnership with the RGB Partnership, our annual commercial and investment tour. We had several developers, realtors, brokers, and entrepreneurs visit us from all over the Rio Grande Valley. We got to show them a little bit about the new developments that are happening here in the great City of Mission, particularly on the south side of town, where we're seeing, you know, some great growth happening and projects moving and going vertical. It was a way to showcase all of the hard work that our entrepreneurs are doing currently, and it fostered a lot of collaboration between key partners. So we'll see what comes of that. As you know, it's our mission to promote the City of Mission as a great place to live, work, and play. And so, we went directly to the folks that guide people in choosing their place to live, that teamed up with the McAllen EDC to go speak to the Greater McAllen Association of Realtors to discuss the current housing situation and the recent updates in projects and jobs that we've had. And then, last update, and my favorite this week, I'm proud to let you know that 13 hopeful entrepreneurs will be competing for seed funding for their startup. First place winner will be $25,000 to go towards getting their business up and running. Second place will be $15,000, third place $10,000. So if you are available to join us, please do so at the Seed 3:00 PM on Friday. If you're not able to join us in person, we'll be streaming it live on Facebook. And additionally, we've been posting some get-to-know-us videos for each of our entrepreneurs, just so that you get to know their backstory ahead of time and get to see the faces of those that have the next big idea in Mission. Unless you have any questions, that's it for my update today.
I don't have any questions. How about you guys?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, as always. Thank you, Seth. Okay, next item is quarterly report from our ambulance board. And I think Tim Brown, the chairman of the committee, is gonna do us the honors.
Thank you. Once again, I'm Tim Brown, Mayor, City Council, and Mike Pettis. Thank you for having me here. What an honor it is to serve this community in this capacity. I'm grateful that y'all selected me to do this. I do want to say that it's a beautiful day in the neighborhood for the Fire Department. Obviously, we just got to see some amazing awards given, and my report today is all good stuff as well. There's a slide there you're able to see. That slide, we're, once again, we're looking at the first quarter. That talks about the number of transports we're doing for the month of January, February, and March. If you'll notice, the April, some of those are in March, just because of time, they kind of went over to April. That's why they're listed there. Our Fire Department is busy when it comes to transporting. We're gonna go to the next page here. All right, so this is my favorite page of all the pages you're gonna see. This is our response time. You know, I was asking the Fire Department if they would please figure out what the national recommendation of a response time is for an ambulance, and it's 11 minutes. Our response time in Mission is 6 minutes and 47 seconds, which, that's outstanding. But let me tell you the backside of this story. That is from the time they get the call to the time the ambulance is there. Oftentimes, there's also an engine that goes, one of the firefighter engines, who normally have either EMTs or paramedics. Many times, they're there before the ambulance. So that number's not included. So oftentimes, the 6:47 is much less when you consider that you have a first responder on the scene, and much less than the national recommendation. I do want to say, too, that when we had our quarterly meeting, Councilwoman Ortega was there. She had a lot of great questions. We were, come anytime, we're grateful for you. Okay, next page. Okay, so this will tell you where we transport people. You, as you know, it is our job as the EMS provider to get you to the nearest facility to handle your needs. And so you can see here, Mission, we particularly bring a lot of our patients to the hospitals' locations here in Mission. And obviously, if you have any questions about any of these, you're certainly welcome to ask. But our number-one goal is to get you to the facility, hello, Mr. Plata? Our number-one goal is to get you to the facility that can take care of your needs immediately. Okay, we're gonna flip the page here. Okay, so right now, currently, the Mission EMS has four medics. That's four ambulances. And so, this is kind of an in-house formula here. What we're trying to do is figure out where to place these medics to make sure that they're kind of evenly based. As you can see, that medic four doesn't have quite as much action as the other ones. And so that's being monitored, and this is actually being monitored on a monthly basis, where we're looking at response times, we're looking at where the call's coming, where is it best to put our units. And so, I appreciate the staff going over this on a regular basis to make sure that it's not just Central Mission that's being taken care of, but everywhere that we service has plenty of, plenty of service. Okay, we're always coming to y'all for money, so this is why we need money. So we're looking at overlapping here. You know, oftentimes, when there's one call, that means that ambulance is out. And whether that means he's on the call, whether that means he's sitting at the emergency room, waiting to drop the patient off, that ambulance is out. And so, if you look at this, you can see where 59% of our calls are overlapping. That means we already have one unit out, where we've got to call out the second unit. And there's been several times where all of our units are out, and we still need more units. If you flip to the last, or to the next page, you'll see some of that there. As you look at this, this is mutual aid. This is where we have given mutual aid to help some other people. But you can also see, in the month of March, it's about 10 times that we needed mutual aid. The month of January and February, we don't have that information. However, for the month of March, 10 times, we did not have a medic available to go out, just due to the fact of overlapping calls. All the units were out. Okay, so the last page. If you go to the last page here, this is Emergicon. Emergicon is the company that we use that actually bills, and they do a lot of work for us. One of the things, and Ms. Ortega was there, she can tell you a little more as well. What was amazing to us is that Emergicon said that Mission, and mind you, we've only been doing this for about a year, but that Mission is the example that they use for every other agency that comes and says, how do we do this the right way? And they use Mission. And so, that's an amazing statement for a brand-new system. And so, what has happened is, our Q&amp;A department, which is run by paramedics, they make sure that everything is coded properly, so that when it gets to the billing department, it doesn't get sent back. And they said there's very few mistakes that ever make it to Emergicon. So when they're billing, they're able to bill properly. And if you look at the cash collections, over the link from October to April, we're looking at, we've collected 1.5 million. Obviously, as we grow, we're gonna learn to perfect that and bring in even more money. But for being a first-year program, that's pretty amazing. And then the last page says, questions. That means it's your part. Any questions?
Hi, Jess, do you want to make a comment since you were at that meeting?
You know, it was a privilege. Mayor never not attends things. So when I get a phone call, hey, can you make this meeting? I was like, oh, it sounds like fun. And it really, truly was. I was able to have a lot of my questions be answered, and then we had very good conversation going back and forth. And I thought it was a great idea that the information that was given at that meeting be public for everybody to know, so it can be transparent, and giving my colleagues the opportunity to ask us probably the same questions that I had. But the presentation was really, really well given. But at this moment, I'd like to acknowledge, I know all of you do such a phenomenal job out there, right, offering the services. But I was really intrigued with two gentlemen that were there giving their reports, because of them and their due diligence of the documentation and making sure all of you all are documenting appropriately and sending it to this company is how we get paid. And so is Wadis, and I think Joey, you're in charge too, right? Can you all please stand? Is he here? Oh, he's on vacation? What did you say?
He's on vacation.
Oh, okay. That's good. That makes me happy that he's on vacation. Yeah, so thank you so much for your hard work and dedication to making sure you're dotting your i's, crossing your t's, and making sure that we get every single dollar back to us. So thank you for that.
To add to Councilwoman Ortega's statement there, she was shocked, as were, I think, several people that were at the meeting. But Emergicon does such a good job of finding a payer that, realistically speaking, 14% of the calls that we get have no payers. That means that 86%, they find a payer for us. That's, you know, anywhere you go, that's outstanding. In South Texas, that seems even a little more outstanding.
Very good. Ruben, any questions? No?
All right. Thank you, guys.
Great job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Chief, do you have anything to add?
Chief, what?
You're good? Okay. Well, again, I'd like to congratulate our EMS staff for doing an amazing job. We've been recognized, or y'all have been recognized, two times in the last month? I'm sorry? The last two council meetings. So that's pretty awesome. So congratulations to everyone, and thank you so much for your dedication, and like Jess said, your due diligence and crossing your i's and dotting your, your, no, it's crossing your t's and dotting your i's. I'll get it. You know, it's been an off Monday today. It's been a real, it's been Monday to the 10th power. So anyway, thanks again. We're gonna move on to the next item. Y'all are welcome to stay, and there's plenty of chairs. So anyway, thanks again. We're going to move on to the next item. Y'all are welcome to stay, and there's plenty of chairs. Okay. All right. The next item is departmental reports. Those were in our packets.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second to accept the reports as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Next item is citizens' participation. Ms. Anna?
Yes, ma'am. Karen Pruitt. She's here to speak on agenda, item number 29, plat approval for Meadow Creek Country Club.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Pruitt. I live at 2101 Mob Drive, and I've made a couple folders just so, for visuals. Is that okay?
Sure, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council members, and city manager. I'm here today regarding item number 29 on today's agenda, the plat approval of three tracts of land within Meadow Creek subdivision. To assist with my remarks, I provided you this folder. So starting on the left side, you will see the map that was sent to the citizens that are within a 200-mile radius. What I did with that map is I color-coded it based on the houses that sit on a lot that is more than 3,800, yeah, 3,800 square feet and less. So the blue houses, if you notice where the tracks are, nearly all of the housing along that track are blue. The majority of the houses are. That means that those houses are over 3,800 square feet. These lots are zoned R1, which is, most recently now, a minimum of 50 width, 100 depth, or 5,000 square feet. That was just recently adopted. However, if you notice behind here, this is what they are currently advertising the lots at. And there is not one lot listed on there for 5,000 square feet. For this reason, I strongly urge the council to deny item 29 because it is not meeting R1 standards, and it is also not in line with the properties that are around it. During the planning and zoning meeting, the owner stated the maximum depth that is allowed for his lots is only 90 feet, which I understand. However, if you do not meet the max, or the minimum depth, then you must increase the width. So by adjusting the lot width, you can still meet the 5,000-square-foot minimum allowance. If you look on the right side of your folder here, I have a couple options, and each house is actually listed. The square footage of the lot for each house around that is actually listed. Nearly all those houses exceed what is requested.
Mayor, may I have a little, just a little, like, one more minute?
Oh, sure. Yes.
Okay.
Did it buzz? I didn't even hear it.
No.
No, it's barely going to buzz.
Okay, no, go ahead.
Okay. My second point is there, on this same map, there are pink X's. Those are under 3,800 square foot. And you do see there are quite a lot in the, away from the track and then down below. And there is also green highlighting where there is current parking, parking in front of these tracks being utilized by the residents of those pink lots. Because there is not enough street parking in front of their homes, so they're actually having to use the street parking in front of those lots. So this is, and then if you look on the second page of this, I actually have taken a picture of where they are utilizing that street parking for vehicles in front of tract one. So based on noncompliance with R1 zoning requirements and the demanded, the demonstrated strain on street parking, I ask that you reject the plat proposal in item number 29 and ask the owner to revise the plat fully to meet the R1 zoning standards. In addition, there was actually, when this came before you, April 8, 2024, and was passed, it did, the plat note was supposed to also include a no two-story home, and each home must have a two-car garage. With 3,800 square feet, that's impossible. Okay? 3,200 square feet, I ran around those houses, most, the smallest one being 3,200 square feet, and there wasn't a house that had a frontage as well as a two-car garage. So for that reason, I am asking you to go ahead and deny the plat map as presented. And I will be sticking around for the entire council meeting. So if you do have questions later and would like to address them to me, you sure can. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the, signed up? No? Okay. The next item is consent agenda. And those are items number seven through 24. Is anything that needs to be pulled?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number seven, approval minutes. Number eight, acknowledgement or receipt of minutes. Number nine, authorization to purchase three portable radios for our new firefighters. Item number 10, authorization to reject bids and authorize to resolicit for elevator installation. Number 11, authorization to solicit for bids to purchase meter connect supplies for Public Works. Number 12, authorization to purchase RAS pump from Lewis Electronic Motors. Number 13, approval for installation of Lyons Park Literacy Project story walk pedestals. Number 14, approval of resolution...
1991.
1991, regarding waterline access agreements with Sheriland Water Supply. That was an awesome year, 1991. Item number 15, approval of resolution...
1992.
An even better year, regarding waterline access agreement with the Sheriland Water Supply. Item number 16, authorization to reenter into an interlocal agreement for Educational Resource Officer Program between the City of Mission and the Mission Independent Consolidation School District. Number 17, authorization to reenter into an interlocal agreement for the Educational Resource Officer Program between the City of Mission and Sheriland Independent School District. Number 18, authorization to purchase 18 air-conditioned units from Trane Supply. Number 19, authorization to ratify emergency rental of front loader unit. Number 20, authorization to purchase one Battle Motors LET2 chassis, chases, how do you say that? Where is GP?
Chassis?
Chassis. Okay. Number 21, authorization for mayor to execute a municipal service cost agreement between the City of Mission and Mission Redevelopment Authority. Number 22, plat approval of Turtle Cove subdivision. 23, approval of proposed park use and rental fee increases. And 24, authorization to solicit bids for Bryant Road Street and drainage improvements.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve all of the items on consent agenda, being items number seven through 24. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. And we're going to deviate from the agenda because it's not 4:30 yet, and we're going to move on to approvals and authorizations. And the first item is a plat approval.
Mayor, city council, good evening. So the first item on your agenda, under plat approval, is the subdivision for Meadow Creek. That's the proposed lots in that subdivision, on South Inspiration Road. And they are requesting those variances, as you mentioned. We came up with some additional graphics for you to review. The proposed lots. This is the lots compared to the city requirements. So here we have the existing lots and the lot sizes. And then here you have the proposed lots. After further evaluation, the lots on the east side do not match in size to the lots in that area. But on the west side, they're kind of matching what is in that, already developed in that subdivision. And this went before a planning and zoning commission, and they recommended approval. It was a 4-2-1 vote.
Can you go to the, one of the first slides that you, before that? That's the one that had the lot sizes on the, in the area.
That's this one.
This one here?
So those plaques on the west side, they're averaging 3,195 square feet. So those proposed lots are kind of in line with those. But on the east side, they're a little bit smaller compared to those lots on that part of the subdivision. As you can see, 5,400 to 7,200 square feet, and then 5,700. So the lots on, the proposed lots on the east side are not, are not in line with the lots in that part of the subdivision, but the ones on the west side...
The ones on the west side. But they're across the street, right?
Yes. So, so that's after a further evaluation that was conducted by staff. So you could consider the variances on the west side and not the east side, or altogether, it's up to the council.
Because the lots that back up to the old golf course have larger lots. I'm just looking at the pictures that she gave us as handouts.
Yes.
And...
Yeah, they're a bit larger.
So the ones that back up to the old golf course, those have the larger lots. The ones that are in the interior have the smaller lots.
That is correct.
Okay.
So right now, can I ask?
Yes, please.
So right now, what is the average of lots? Can we take it? There is only one item that covers all of the lots that they are proposing?
Correct. They're proposing all those lots, and they're requesting the variances to the lot frontage, the lot area, and the lot depth.
What is the total number of lots that they're proposing?
It's 21 lots, total.
Those 21, which one are within the same average? Is there any exceptions?
They're all requesting variances. Some of them are 42 feet in width. Lots, lot area, they vary from 3,700 to 4,000, 3,700.
Mr. Servantes, and we did change it to 5,000 square feet.
Yes, it was reduced, correct.
So we are already working with developers in our community to where we reduce the number, the size.
Correct.
We went from 6,000 to 5,000, and we went from 60 frontage to 50.
50.
To 50. So, and that just happened within the last three meetings or so, right?
April 28, to be specific.
April 28, okay.
So it's the same, mayor, for me to say that even though some of them are less than 5,000 square feet, but based on the New Orleans, we want to go ahead and, to me, require that we stay within the 5,000 square feet. Doesn't matter that in the past, I mean, it was different, but I think 5,000 for an R1 is something that is reasonable.
That's my, that's my feeling, too. I've always been a proponent of whatever's on the ground should be the right zoning. And if R1 is the zoning for that area, then we should meet those requirements. That's my thought. So it's the same thing.
I think we are, we want more rooftops in Mission, but I mean, I think that's why we reduce it to 5,000 versus 6,000. And my personal opinion is for us to stick to that number.
I think the only item that they cannot meet is the depth, but they could comply with the width and the area.
And that's, and that's, you know, that's more reasonable, I would say, that we could possibly look at a variance on one item, but all three is kind of tough.
Approve the variance to the depth, but not the width and not the area.
Okay.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Servantes, was this applicant, was he told about the 5,000 square feet ordinance that we have? So this is for him to ask for the variances for it?
Yeah, so he's aware of the lot size requirements, but he's pursuing the smaller lots based on what we have in that neighborhood. But it's up to the council.
My last question. I know that our planning and zoning, they see this item before it comes to us. Were they informed also that we had established this new ordinance of 5,000 square? They did know?
Yeah, they know. I mean, it went through them.
They approved it.
Yes.
Yes. And is the developer here?
Yes, he is.
He just got here. Okay. Can I have any other discussion? What are your thoughts?
I'm in agreement. I'm put like 5,000 square feet.
Okay. I would like to maintain with the, I believe, the reduction that we did, to stay within those.
Okay.
Can I just say, I think this is something that I would like for every developer that comes to Mission to abide to our ordinance and not waste their time and our time, you know? And just stick to the 5,000 square feet, and I think planning and zoning. And, I mean, those are ordinances that have been approved by the council, and they've been very much taken into consideration. And I think we need to abide to that. That is my personal opinion.
Mr. Servantes, my question is, would we be approving the plat because they're going to have to readjust it?
So you could, you could just approve the variance to the lot depth and not the other variances? And so then they will just have to adjust the plat.
And this is a question for legal. Could we approve the variance on the, on the, on the two, the two items that they're asking, but not the, not the square footage, and not approve the plat, so they can come back with the plat?
Yes, you can do that. So as long as it's on the record, what the approval and the disapproval is, and the staff would make sure that the plat that's submitted, by the end of the corrected amended plat, would meet those specifications as approved by council.
So then the...
You could approve it subject to those changes.
We could approve. I'd rather see the plat come back to us with the adjusted sizes.
With a revised, with a revised plat.
Ruben, you want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion with, or not to.
To.
So you can table the item?
We're just approving the variance on the width and the depth, but not the square footage.
Or you can table it and approve it once it comes back.
Well, I just want them to feel comfortable that we're going to approve those two, that we're okay with those two variances, but not the...
It, yeah, it's not the width, it's just the depth.
Only the depth.
It's only the depth.
Only the depth.
It's going to be 50 feet wide in the front.
Okay.
And the area.
So I guess I can make a motion to approve the plat based on the variance for the depth only.
Right. But we would like to see that plat.
And for us to see the revised plat.
Yes. That would be the motion. Is that okay? Yes? Okay. Is there a second?
If I may, if we could just make sure that the plat note that we discussed is on...
The two-story. The two-story.
Correct. That that's also
It had to be one story.
Yeah.
Ensure that that's also included.
Okay.
Still waiting on
Second.
Okay. All right. There is a motion and a second to approve the the variance on the depth.
Only with respect to the depth and denying the variance request with respect to the width and the area.
Right. Okay. And that we will revisit this plat at a later date.
Okay.
So, Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Servantes, does it have anything to do, because I know that they mentioned the two-car garage? Is that something that we need to say here, or we cannot?
Two parking spaces.
It has to have two parking spaces.
The city requires for all new subdivisions, two parking spaces, but it can be in the driveway. So that's a city code requirement for all new subdivisions.
And the two-car garage, there will be an HOA that there's
Yes, some developers, they have in their, in their dis restrictions, a one-car garage or a two-car garage behind the front setback. That's up to the developer.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Okay.
May I have a question?
Yes.
So the proposed lot width is 42, but it's not going to meet the required 50, is it?
It's going to have to be 50. It's just, we're all, we're only giving them the variance on the depth.
Okay.
That's why they're coming back with a revised plat. Meeting the 5,000 square feet requirement with only a variance to the
So they're going to have to go more than 50 because they got to get to 5,000?
Yeah, they will have to.
Okay. All right. So we're ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Next item?
So no, no variances for this one, so that's good. And it's the extension of Esperanza Homes, Mike Rhodes, is a developer. The Sendero subdivision, so the southwest corner of Inspiration Road, and one mile south. They, with this developer, he likes the curvilinear streets. The area is developing very nicely, so we're asking for plat approval subject to conditions for this phase, and no park fees due to all the dedication of land that he has, Mr. Rhodes has dedicated to the city.
Okay.
So he's donating land instead of the fee?
He has donated 90 acres already. So there's a table there with the donations that he, so he has exceeded our ordinance requirements.
Now, I just want to clarify to make sure people say that we're not waving just for some people.
Right.
No, it's based on the dedication of land that he has, the developer has done for hike and bike trails, for a police substation, a fire station, different things.
And there's no exceptions to that? To the, to any variances?
Right, and there's no variances?
No, there's no variance because of the land that he has dedicated.
Mayor, there's no other questions or comments that we'd like to approve?
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the plat as presented for Sendero Phase 3. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Next item is approval of media upgrade. Ms. Cindy. Sidney.
27?
Oh. What happened? What? Aren't we on 31?
Yes, you're right.
31.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am very excited to come before you today to present some very exciting, much-needed upgrades to our chamber room. As you know, the audio isn't as clear as we'd like it to be, and the monitors are just a tad outdated. We do plan to add five new HD cameras to the chamber room. Currently, we only have two, and they are stationary. This limits to what we can provide to our residents. They're not able to see as effectively. But this time, if we have five HD cameras, the audio will be much clearer. We'll be able to zoom in, move them around if someone's speaking. I don't know if you guys noticed, but usually when we have residents come forward, they tend to lean this way, and it's not completely as an eloquent view as that we would like. So this would be a big upgrade. It would improve the audio system. Now, they are, we are contracting NELCO, so they are very respected in this firm. They did the Texas House of Representatives Chamber. They did a complete revamp. UTRGV, they're the ones that are doing the football stadium as well. So this is something that, they are the best in the business, and we are very proud to be working with them for this project. The total cost of the upgrade is $220,000. Now, this is fully funded through the PEG funds. Now, this is restricted use dollars designated specifically for government equipment enhancements like this. Now, to be clear, we have $391,000 currently in our PEG fund. This upgrade would be 220,000. This leaves us with 171,000 that we will be using to enhance the upcoming studio that will be built, and we're going to be able to provide more projects for the community. Do you have any questions?
I'm going to approve, and I'll lie that is coming from the Public Education and Governmental Access Channels.
I would like to second that motion.
Thank you.
There's a motion and a second to approve the item as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you.
Next item?
Bobby Vidal, who's our financial advisor, will be giving that presentation. If you recall, you approved an ordinance for us to go ahead and sell $10 million worth of bonds for various projects for the city of Mission. And so we sold bonds this morning, and so he has a presentation for you to hopefully accept the bids that we received on those bonds.
And is it ordinance number 5656?
5651.
5651.
Good afternoon, mayor, council, Mr. Perez. Again, like Mike mentioned, Bobby Vidal was the Australian host of your financial advisors. So this morning, we went out to the market. I was here with staff and with Mr. Mike going over the issuance this morning. We went to the market about 9:00 a.m. this morning. We had it open for about an hour. I think we had on $10 million of bonds. We probably had about 16 or 17 million in orders. Now, some particular bonds, they liked more, some they liked less, so we had to fill in the gaps. But we worked through it with Mike. And I'll just go through this real quick. The first page, it's just an outstanding debt right now. So if you notice, the green line above the bars, that's your capacity to borrow without raising the tax rate or anything like that. So they, the, just so you know, if you look at the top right corner, S&amp;P and Moody's reaffirmed your current ratings of A minus, and Moody's, it was B double A two. Again, I know in speaking to Mike, we'd like to get that improved, but some of the issues have been, you know, audits, and we're getting those back on time. But so hopefully, we keep seeing the results of the city getting, moving in a positive direction. So if they see the pattern, I think we may be able, may be able to see them improve on those in the future. But again, if you go to the next page, page two, you'll notice here today, the project fund was $10 million. We got a, an interest rate, a tick of about 4.63 percent. If you notice, to the furthest to the right, the second column called the required INS tax rate, that's the INS tax rate that you have right now, levied at 7.57 pennies. With this issuance, we do not exceed that tax rate, so we'll continue to maintain the tax rate, no rate increase. And then if you notice going forward, it'll drop about 6.3 pennies and 5.6 pennies, and so on and so forth. So there is capacity in the future when you'll need some capital needs, so there is space. And we do have, on the furthest left, the net taxable value. You'll notice there, we have about $7 billion for 2026. You actually have probably close to 7.5, but there's, we still need to wait for the valuations to be solidified. So we're trying to be conservative there. And then on the growth rate, we only went with 3, 2, and so forth, just to be conservative. So again, with what went out today, it was a choppy market. It's been a very hectic market for the last, well, the entire first half of this year, I guess. So then again, if you go to the next page, you'll see the post pricing. You'll notice the bar is there. That's what your debt's going to look like. And again, the, the green and red line where they merge, that's the capacity. So like I mentioned before, if you need to continue to go forward in a methodical way, get, addressing the things that you need to get to, we can work with staff and with the council to make sure we can get there. But again, all things being said, I would like to thank Mr. Perez and Andy and Vidal. We had a lot of phone calls with rating agencies, underwriters' counsel, due diligence, lots of questions, and they handled it really well and performed very well for the city. So I just wanted to thank them for that. And again, with that, the last page, page four. Again, we priced today, and we should be closing July 1, and the fund should be delivered to the city at that point. But I guess with that, I don't know if you have any questions?
So we'd be funded July 1st? The funding would be when?
July 1, it'll close, and the fund is going to be there. But I believe there was reimbursement resolution, so if any funds were expanded, it would reimburse the front balance.
Okay.
If the market gets better, we can always refinance. If the market is better with, if?
Yeah, you had one that was capable of refinancing, but it was not in the money. It's just the current tariffs and all these things that have been in the market, it just hasn't been beneficial yet. We'll keep an eye on it and monitor it, but there may be some more refinances in the future.
Are there any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'm going to approve, what's the resolution?
5656. 5656.
Mayor, I'm going to approve, considering and approve the ordinance 5656 after our citation of the city of Mission, tax revenue certificate, publication series 2025.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the ordinance 5656. As presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby.
It is 4:34, so we're going to move to the public hearings. And the first one is item number 25. And that would have ordinance number 5657? Okay.
Okay, we have a rezoning from agricultural opening stream to single-family residential district. This is for a proposed 51-lab, single-family subdivision on Moorefield Road, north of 2 Mile. That's the area. So the area is mostly developed, so you just have that tract left. Zoning is single-family residential all around, so it's in line with everything in the area. Photo of the property. In line with the comprehensive plan. No one spoke in opposition to the rezoning, and PNC recommended approval unanimously.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Is there anyone online?
No.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second to approve the rezoning request from AOI to single-family residential, R1. As presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Next is a rezoning from a large-lab, single-family district to a single-family residential district. This is the property on Trinity Road, East of Stewart Road, where the property owner wants to do a replat, to give lots for his kids. But the lots for the proposed replat do not meet the depth requirements for R1A, which is 120. And that's why he's, so this is the existing two-lot subdivision. This is the proposed replat for his property on the north side. The smaller lots do not meet the 120-lot depth for R1A. So that's why you have this rezoning, so that for the replat, there's no variances. And there was no opposition from the surrounding property owners. Public Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone online?
No.
Are there any questions or a motion?
I'm going to approve based on the recommendation of the staff and PNC.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve as presented the rezoning for, and this would be ordinance number 5658. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Next item?
It's a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window for the proposed Eriza Queria restaurant. This is a restaurant that started in San Juan, and then expanded to Far, and then Mac Island, Edinburgh. And now they're expanding to Mission. It's a very popular restaurant in a commercial zone. Floor plan, aerial, the site plan. A lot of the business, their business is drive-through, and then you have an artist rendering. Really nice.
It looks very nice.
Yeah. Very nice. Nice addition to the city. The artist did a good job.
Is there any?
And then there's the list of conditions, and PNC recommended approval unanimously.
Is this on the northeast corner?
Northeast corner, Inspiration and Griffin Parkway.
Because there's a bacon lair, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Just west of Ronco.
Just west of the what?
Ronco, the, yes.
Across the street from Leo's.
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online?
No.
Are any more questions or a motion?
Mayor, we're ready for Eriza Queria, so I'm going to
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as requested, and this would be ordinance number 5659. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. 5-0.
Next is a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window at Mija Mercado Coffee Shop. About a month ago, you approved a conditional use permit for the Doce Wine Bar, 214 Tam Landry. In the same building, they're proposing at this coffee shop, and they're proposing a drive-through window. So some of the photos are going to be familiar to you. So nice business coming to the downtown, wine bar and coffee shop. So there you have the list of conditions, and no one spoke in opposition, and PNC recommended approval unanimously.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Anyone online? Are there any questions or a motion?
I'm going to approve the conditional use permit for a drive-through service window for Mija Mercado Coffee Shop.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the request as presented, and this would carry ordinance number 5660. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is unfinished business. I don't believe there is any. And the next item after that is the routine matters.
Yes, Madam Mayor and City Council, the Spears Memorial Library will be holding, providing meals, breakfast and lunch, from June 2 to August 1, in conjunction with Mission ISD. And I want to thank them for helping provide those meals to children under 18 years old for breakfast and lunch. Also, the library will be hosting a series of weekly activities that they can check our website for the summer. That's it.
Okay. Council comments?
Yes, I do. I wanted to start with, I hope everybody's having a great summer so far. I had the privilege of waking up super early on Saturday, and I'm glad I did, because it was an amazing 5K for the Speedy Foundation. I have never seen so many runners. I think I need to start running. There was over 2,000 runners, and I was recording, and it was already like 3 and 1/2 minutes, and the runners kept on coming. I feel that having a 5K of this magnitude just brought a lot of business to the area. I was so proud of the people and the organization that worked very hard. I was so proud of the people and the organization that worked very hard to put that together, and I just wanted to say kudos to Nori that woke up early with me to attend, and maybe next year we'll all run in it. I'll walk.
Walk. Maybe walk?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Marissa?
Oh, yes. Unfortunately, I did not make the event, but I did, I was out of town, but I did watch, see all the pictures, watched the video. It looked fantastic. Kudos for a great job to the Speedy Foundation. Thank you.
No comments.
Okay. All righty. I too would like to congratulate the Speedy Foundation. They did an amazing job, and it was very well put together, very well attended. We do have one runner in the house. Thank you, Sydney, for doing that. So it was an amazing event, and it's a, it's an event that gives back to our community throughout the valley. So it's a great event, and I'm very proud to be a part of it as a City of Mission. So that's all for me, and so the next item is executive session, and is there a motion to do so?
Sure.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 071, and .087. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. We shall be right back.
To go into open session, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. There is no action on items one, two, and three. And there is a motion on channel... Channel four, on item number four. I need a motion on item number four.
Aye, so move.
Second.
All right, the motion is to move forward with the appraisals for the lots indicated in section four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm motion adjourned.
Second.
There's a motion and second to adjourn. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And please sign.
Okay, Andy.